Thank you for being here. We have competitive forums. The air conditioning is controlled by the school district gods at the school district building. So we get what we get from down the road. But so thanks for being here. Let's say hello and welcome all our candidates while we're here. How many forums have you guys done so far?
Oh, nine.
Of course, it's a dozen. More or more?
More.
Yeah, sure. So anyway, as y'all know, early voting starts on Monday. Don't forget to take notes. And I'll put this at the end as well. We'll be gathering at the cake pin right down the road for Jolly Merriment Spanish. If you guys would like to come and visit with us to More Than Not, we'd love to have you. So the rules of engagement we have, so we have one microphone. We will pass it down. I will ask questions. This is my first time. We've officially moderated a forum, so please be gracious with the moderator. We will begin with a two-minute opening statement. We have a few questions for you guys, and then we'll do a one-minute closing statement. We did not plan in budget time for rebuttals, so please keep that in mind as you give your answers. We have been collecting questions from the neighborhood, from our neighbors, through an online submission for about two weeks. So we are not accepting questions from the audience tonight. But if you have a question for a specific candidate, drag them down in the parking lot and bring them to the cake pin. Okay, great. So we'll get started with Ms. Gutierrez, who will give a two-minute opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. I am very pleased to be a part of this wonderful group of familiar faces. We've actually been working together at different locations, either with H D R C and Sony. I'm a neighbor down the street, Government Hill. And the reason why I'm actually in this race is because of the issues that we've been facing in District Two, which includes Sony and H D R C. Tier One has been addressing the responsibility of our developers dealing and working with our communities. And we need to encourage that and continue that path. We've been successful, but we've also had some failures. But we need to work together as a community for the entire District Two. Because if it's happening here, it will happen throughout our neighborhoods for the candidates up here in front of us. So I'm very happy to be a part of this, and never thought it would be. I was, I am a political science major at UTSA. I'm actually from Brownsville, Texas. But I came here in eighteen when I decided to come to UTSA. This is home, and it is my home. Our husband has no plans to retire right now, especially now that I'm involved in this. He is a veterinarian in the area. But the fact is, we hear the concerns of many of our residents in San Antonio. He hasn't here, I haven't here. We've been involved. We know we have issues, and we all need to work together. So now, I'm the scientist running for this office. With your support, I can hopefully have a better voice, a louder voice for your concerns. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Joseph Powell. I'm running for city council here in District Two. It's so great to be here in Maggie Park. I used to do jobs here when I was a beekeeper. We would go and trade out, switch out hives at the botanical gardens with the yard that we had on the Castro Hill. So I really like the neighborhood. I like the cake pin. I like the place I was there before. It was, you know, a little seedier than the 109, the 106. Yeah, that was, you know, I mean, everybody went there. It didn't mean anything. Anyways, I'm saying too much. If you want somebody who will serve two full years as your councilperson, I guarantee you I will. If you want somebody who isn't paid by developers, I can promise you I'm in that also. And if you want somebody who's actually studying public finance, I can help you with that as well. I do have a lot of interesting ideas about this city, and I think we need to look at sustainable opportunities for the future regarding development. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, everyone. Selena Santi-Banias. I grew up on Carson Street, so at Government Hill. Since I was fourteen years old, I've been walking all of these streets because I had to walk down Carson through Fort Sam Houston when it used to be open, and worked right here at Kitty Park since fourteen. So a dollar forty an hour, could you imagine that? A little child labor law, something that we should look at. But, you know, I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, you know, between Sonic, the Witty, everything else back in the day, what it used to look like. I am well informed of everything that's going on, some of the things that I want to work on in this area, of course, is public safety, making sure that we have access to transportation other than just vehicles. Because with all the construction, we're going to need other modes of transportation for this community. Of course, me growing up and living in Harvard Place East Lawn, where I went to Wheaties, Sam Houston, St. Phillips, I understand all of the dynamics that come around with it. I am a small business owner. Both my husband and I have a construction company. I do have a nonprofit that's called The Boardroom Project, where I teach young girls business using the midload tech off of Walter's, so you don't want to see that asset. We got to make sure we have a streamlined appointment to become family business owners with board leaders that will impact their lives as well as ours on a daily basis. I do serve on the board of Sarah, San Antonio Regional Alliance of the Homeless, and I believe one of your neighbors, Britta, is the E E as well. So if you want to inquire about work I've done, she, you can just ask her neighbor as well as Lea Gonzalez, who lives in the neighborhood. I look forward to being not a politician, but a public servant. So serving the community, serving the community as I have done before, during, and as I will continue, regardless of what happens to Main Four. So thank you very much once again, Selena Santi-Banias, and I look forward to meeting all of you this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Keith Tony. I'm the former councilor here. And I don't know if you've resolved your traffic issues from Fort Sam, my former employer, that's where I retired from, but I know you've had those issues. And I know that that's something that needs to be worked on because your streets became through waits and not streets. And I assume that probably the same thing going on right now. So we need to work on that. That's one of the things. Not only was I a former councilor, I spent fifteen years as a school board member in the Fort Sam Houston I S D. My wife's retired in the Army. I'm a Vietnam veteran. And I'm proud of the Broncs that brought back to Vietnam, and I'm proud of the sense of service that brought back as well. Because before that, it was about me. But Vietnam taught me it's not about you. It's about service to other people. And so that's why I'm running. Had no intention of running. My wife and I retired. When you talk about fixed incomes, we live on Social Security and retirement. So we're fixed income folks, so I understand that. So that's why I'm running because people came to me and said, you need to get back into this. We need you to get back into it. What do you do? It's about service. It's not about self. And so that's why I'm running, and I appreciate your consideration for your vote. Glad you're here tonight. Look forward to your questions.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am Jana Andrew Sullivan. I am a lifelong resident of District Two. I was born and raised right off of East Commerce and Honey, and I still reside there with my mother and my children. I decided to step into this arena, not understanding exactly what being a politician was, but definitely as a concerned community resident. I haven't done a lot of the things that Mr. Keith Tony has done in my life, but I look forward to being your District Two representative. I have worked with the San Antonio City of San Antonio, and I was appointed to the Martin Luther King Junior Commission. I work with the N double A C P on their veteran services. I also have moved forward with my church and making sure that we do community outreach by giving away gas, toys, food, clothes, our health fair. Those are just some of the things that I look forward to continuing to do on a larger level for District Two. As I've walked the neighborhood, we heard many of the concerns of the community, and I plan to address those as much as possible. We have worked with developers. We have received our donations from some developers. But it's all in the act of doing something before you get in the seat that makes the difference. So as I stand here today, there are many great things that are coming to District Two. There are many great people that want to see a change in District Two. And if we work together in cohesiveness as one unit, we bridge the gap, and we do not have to fight amongst each other. We build amongst each other. And as candidates, we look forward to representing our district with our whole hearts. So thank you.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Ruben Arsenega. My family has a three-hundred-year history in San Antonio, specifically the east side. And in terms of a quick story, we have a small landscaping company called Oita Landscapes. And one of our first clients in nineteen ninety-three was a Ms. King who lived right here. And I recall she had a nineteen sixty-seven Eldorado Cadillac. But she's long since passed away, but I'll never forget how open she was with this, allowing her for us to service her yard. But having said that, I've been educated at Texas Lutheran University. I got my master's degree at UTSA, where I currently work in the Department of Civil Engineering. But like we said, in many of these forums, the most powerful lessons that we learn are in our communities, specifically with the families, the peoples, and the leaders. And looking here today, I see the whole marks of diversity, which essentially are the cornerstone and the strength of our communities in District Two. What has to happen is our vision needs to change. We need to alter our trajectory. We have the ability to lead San Antonio as a people and as a community if we create one District Two. We need to unify along community lines. I know we all have different needs, wants, and agendas. Maggie Park, Denver Heights, Willshire, Roosevelt. However, if we can unify among the shared experiences that we currently have, we'll have more advocacy and a stronger unified voice in District Two. One of the major challenges that we do face is the issue of stability. We've had a number of councilpeople in the last five years. But I look toward the future, and I reclaim the notion that we can reclaim our future and we can lead San Antonio as the premier district in all of San Antonio. Remember, we have the social capital. We have the people. We have the youth. So why can't we reach even further and higher? I believe this is possible. It can be done, but it'll take hard work, backbone, and the ability to communicate. Those issues amongst all are clientele and our positions. So I look forward to the questions today, and thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Walter Perry. I grew up on the east side, grew up a knucklehead kid. I used to be a proud diamond soldier. My wife, she's running for S J S D School Board in District Two. We're running because we're invested in the district. We bought our home three years ago. We have six kids in the district, and my wife works at St. Louis College. We're both graduates of St. Louis College. So we're invested, and we feel like the best way to show that you love the community is to invest in the community. So we bought a house right off of L Street in Long Island. And that area is very challenging, gunshots, violence, all sorts of things. But we invested in that area because we believe in that area and we believe in the people. Our platform is simple. We want community engagement. Like what we're doing right now with you folks, we want to talk to you, we want to get your ideas, we want to get your opinions. We want to know how you feel about things because that's important. That's the number one thing. Pumping safety, you guys got to feel safe. I remember growing up, this used to be where prostitutes used to be right out in Raleigh. So, you know, I know this city really, really well. Another thing is economic development. You guys have done a tremendous job in transforming this from pretty much where prostitutes used to be to a presence of respect. And so you should give yourselves a hand for that because we need to emulate you guys and try to do what you guys are doing. Another thing is youth services. I'm a really big champion for youth services. I run a program called Suit Up, where we help African students get ahead in life, and then we get them brand new suits and teach them how to tie ties and similar things like that. But the most important thing right now is the property taxes. I'm going to be a champion for property taxes because as a new homeowner, I'm just learning about my property taxes. I just learned about homeownership. So there's a lot about property taxes, homeownership, everything I need to know. I need to teach my kids. And that's what we need to sit down and figure out, how do we get these taxes to stop kicking us out of our neighborhoods and the properties that are already invested in? If you just want to make a little money off of them, the taxes is more than what you're making off the property. So we got to try to find a way to lower the taxes or freeze them. Thank you. My name is Walter Perry, and we want the job.
All right, guys. So as we enter into question and answers, I will have a timer on my phone for a minute to answer each question, and I'll just raise my hand and try and get your attention if you go over. But don't feel pressured or, you know, don't take the time, but just take your time and answer the question.
Bongana.
Thank you. All right. The way that we're going to ask questions too is we'll start with the cities until it's over, and then we'll rotate down the way. So then, just so we'll have an opportunity to answer first for the next question, and suddenly we'll have opportunity to answer first in the next. So our first question this evening is that Maggie Park is really proud to be a part of District Two, but it falls in an area of District Two that is not within the boundaries of the traditional east side. What issues do you see that base Maggie Park that are different from those of the traditional east side, and how do you plan to give your attention to those issues that will require some extra time because they don't fit within the parameters?
She was going to be first, right?
Well, another forum is because of which was it?
Which was it, honestly? Which did you say?
Okay, I'm fine. I'm fine. We've had different forums, different ways we go.
I'll go first. Give me. All right, I do have a...
You take it.
I have a strong opinion about this, but y'all can probably make better opinions. This is a more generalized type of thing. I am just so fed up with the fact that you can't drive through Fort Sam Houston anymore. I know that, like, we as a city council probably don't have that much of a say, but like, how much longer will our city and this neighborhood keep being directly affected by the September eleven terrorist attacks? I mean, like, come on, open the base up, like, let us use it. That's where we used to play soccer. That's where we had all of our childhood memories. Come on, I mean, open it back up. I think that's a very unique issue that faces the city, and I think it would greatly improve the flow of traffic.
Thank you, Jim. So I concur with Joe. We really do need to open up Fort Sam Houston. As a child, once again, it was me sneaking on base. I grew up on Carson Street, but having to walk through the base, but ultimately seeing all the businesses and everything that closed down just doesn't allow for the congestion. And if you really, if we really stay open, and yes, Fort Sam is a city in its own, right? They literally want to dictate what happens and really has no influence. But from people who've had experience in the past or have been in these positions, you know, these are conversations we could have already established. I'm all about connecting, making relationships, having conversations. There is something, there should be no reason why we could not pressure that and make that happen. But ultimately, with all the traffic, with all the bond, everything that's coming on Broadway, if we do not find a parallel route that will really alleviate some of this traffic congestion, I couldn't even get from Carson Street onto Broadway, and I attempted like five different shortcuts. So there's a lot that we can do and will do.
One of the issues I think I see for you is that you're landlocked. I mean, you are just happy here. It just blows my mind that you guys are just landlocked. So you just can't spread out horizontally. You got to go vertically. And then the city steps in and tells you, you can't do that. So that makes it tough for you. Now, as for Fort Sam, back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, there was a plan, there were several plans, but there was a plan for an underground tunnel, if you will, that would come out on the other side on New Bronco's Avenue. Now, I don't know what happened to that. I don't know if that was scuttled or what, but, and it was less than twenty-five million dollars, which is the amount of money Harburger Park got for that land bridge for deer and skunked across the road. So I just think there would have been money better spent to make it more convenient for you as residents, tax-free residents. So that's one of the options.
I walked through the community, and the biggest concern was your N C D, is what everybody was concerned with. The first one, the original one, worked well for the community. However, with all of the changes and the different ordinances that have come with the N C D, I heard a lot of people say that it affects the community totally. So when you talk about transportation on Broadway and you can't even get into your own community, that needs to be resolved. You need to have total access to where you live. And we as a community, as leaders for our district, need to make sure that our residents come first. So we need to address that along with making sure that everything that is needed within the community, from the speed limits to the scooters to the developments, are actually done properly and fit the needs of this community.
Well, I would like to take the conversation maybe a little bit of a different area, so to speak. Obviously, you are landlocked, and that brings its own host of issues in terms of the elderly population who do need routes in terms of wanting the hospital and things like that. So that's a potential problem and one that's already struck, so to speak, and that has to be addressed immediately. But what I would say, while doing some of the research here in the neighborhood, it was said that Airbnb's, this has one of the highest areas of density for Airbnb's. And of course, that brings its own set of issues, like we had said before, in terms of people not necessarily respecting the area that they're in, police having to come at different times of the night. And that goes back to the notion of what the city is trying to address in terms of the tier-one and tier-two properties. And essentially what they're saying is, if you're tier-one Airbnb owner, so to speak, you actually live in the house that you're renting out or leasing in terms of the short-term rental. The second part of that, it's a tier-two property, which to me seems to be the more immediate issue, and that is to say, you don't live in the actual building that you're leasing out. You actually live in different residences altogether. You may not even be a District Two resident. Thank you.
Can somebody correct me if I'm wrong? Is the gate open? I know they opened the gate already. Oh, part of the gate? Okay, part of the gate is open. I think the best...
They changed the gates. They turned it to New Bronco's.
Okay. The question pretty much is, if I'm not saying, what's the best way to connect with the rest of the east side?
Or what issues differentiate us from the rest of the east side?
Well, we kind of have like the same type of issue, property crime. Like I said, you guys have done a tremendous job of transforming your neighborhood, taking charge of your neighborhood and doing the necessary changes yourselves. I think the best way to connect is to, you guys have a lot of small little bars and pull-ups over here, and I think connecting with some of the smart businesses over there on the east side, some of the black, Hispanic, and Asian and other cultures, and bring a different flavor down there so that way people can start seeing a different flavor down there and make you proud. You guys have the style. It's just about bringing different types of cultures here and just making that mix blend. So I think collaboration and just really just taking the chance to go different cultures.
Well, you're dealing with growth around you. You are in a very unique situation in San Antonio. You have the museum, you have Brighter Bridge Park, you have the Shake Shack right now that is under construction. We have a discussion of Kitty Park being moved into Brighter Bridge Park. You have an area of growth that brings in tourists and locals to your area, which means more traffic, more issues. I'm dealing with trying to wait and make sure that kids and the parents walking from the museum over to Lionsfield to the park are living, walking in the middle of the street. Who designed that? And, you know, you have to consider the fact, when you're adding these type of amenities to our city, think of what's going to happen. You want them to grow. That means more traffic. So think of the future. Just don't plant in the middle of the neighborhood along Broadway because you're going to increase traffic and safety issues. You also have the AT&T building on the corner of Flodder and Broad, but it was just recently sold. You're going to have you to say, hey, me, your neighbor. The traffic's going to increase as well. So the fact is that the information that needs to be provided to you as a community needs to come from the city. You need to be involved with what they want to create here. There was discussion within your community not too long ago why it still sees signs and not to be historic. There's really bad about being historic. I live in a historic district, but the surrounding area of my Government Hill neighborhood is not. We're fighting a uphill battle because we could be historic, but the city still doesn't respect us. So is it a good or is it a bad thing? But you have future members in your neighborhood that are working to benefit you. So this is what we need to deal with, and we need to work together regarding how you want to see your future in your neighborhood. Thank you. Mayor Councilman Art Hall has publicly stated that he supports decisions of neighborhood associations and has made a conscious effort to work with neighborhood associations for involved local issues. If you are elected, at what level will you work with neighborhood associations in District Two?
So I think we've, where we're at as a community and as a district, for too long we've been fragmented, we've been isolated, whether it's Maggie Park or Government Hill. People just feel left out. People aren't talking from one side of the district to the other. And we really should be united. This is the time for us to come together and to really say that at the end of the day, we're all San Antonioans and we're all District Two residents, and how can we help each other? Because one issue on one side is going to address the other and so forth, right? We don't have to reinvent the wheel every single time. I'm a firm believer is that go beyond neighborhood associations. Not every neighborhood association is the end-all, be-all. There are community groups, community organizations, there are individuals that work out outside of the N A's, so not only in addition to supporting the neighborhood associations, and instead of splitting them up in quadrants, I'll actually pair up presidents that are more mature with more novice or neophytes so that they can then work together to teach each other of what has been going on and providing that history within a community. So once again, we need to make sure that we're mentoring each other, but going beyond just the neighborhood association that represents and supports our communities.
I was a two-term neighborhood association president. So I know the value of neighborhood associations, large, small, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You are the voice of your neighborhood, therefore you are the voice of your community. You represent your community. And as a councilperson, again, because I've been a neighborhood association president, I know how vibrant it is to have a councilperson that has an open door policy for you. Many times, you just want to be heard. Sometimes, some things you can get done as a councilperson, some things you can't. But the thing is, have an open door policy for neighborhood associations so you don't feel like you're being neglected or just ignored. And I've seen both happen. I pledge not to do that.
I thank you guys for having me. And as you speak about neighborhood associations, we've actually started going out, sitting down, talking to neighborhood associations. We haven't made it to all of you, and we know that that can be a problem if we don't have that accessibility, accountability, transparency, and action. As I sat with the Councilman Art Hall, and I listened to some of the issues that came out of, of course, dignitizing with the Hay Street Bridge, and I listened to what was lacking, and that was the voice that was not being listened to, and that was the communication that wasn't being had in unity with making sure that those needs of that community were truly met. So before you even get to the seat, you need to start working to make sure that those communities are actually heard wholeheartedly, to stop what you're doing and listen, to take accountability for what your community is wanting to do, and you've served them, and you've become a servant of everything District Two needs. Thank you.
So what I would say is, neighborhood organizations, they're the essential lifeblood of putting communities back together, and they're advocates for our neighborhood, they're voices for our people. But what needs to be recognized are the people that are necessarily not part of the neighborhood associations. And ultimately, that's really where the harder work comes in in terms of saying, how do we put them and allow them to be stakeholders in our community? So that's where the neighborhood association becomes more effective. What I would say, going back to the notion of neighborhood associations... What I would say, going back to the notion of neighborhood associations, is this. Not necessarily all of them have the same agendas, and that's okay. We can work on the shared experiences. But I do know in some instances, in certain neighborhood associations, and I'll say this and be upfront, there's certain elements that actually have commandeered these neighborhood associations and pushed a different agenda. And they don't necessarily, they're pretty brazen about it. They don't necessarily hide some of the things that they want to do. So in all honesty, you have to say, you know what, I'll evaluate each of these neighborhood associations. If their notion is to commit and work for a community, then let's work with them. However, if we know there's a different agenda at play, then they need to be put to task as well.
Well, if I'm lucky to represent you, uh, we have a ninety-day plan, which includes, we're gonna need frequently with our own councilmen so that way we can devise a transition plan because he 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 already has things in place. Uh, we're gonna need to schedule a District Two to Chief Plan meeting. And we're gonna need with the uh all the neighborhood associations, I'm aware that he has a president's meeting, uh, we're going on uh Councilman Art Hall. So we want to keep that president's meeting going. But we want to expand it to more neighborhoods inside of District Two. The problem is, is that a lot of these neighborhood associations are not organized. And so we want to work to get these neighborhoods organized on their own. We don't want one neighborhood taking care of five neighborhoods. We want to get these neighborhoods self-sufficient like you guys are and get them on the path to where they can help themselves. It's all about the community helping themselves. It's all about the community helping themselves. Thank you.
We have seen for several different candidates mention that there are different issues regarding our neighborhood associations. And one of them is in my neighborhood. And yes, we have issues because our neighborhood association no longer is representative of our neighborhood. We don't have a board. We have two members on our board right now. So this is public information. The fact is, when that happened, our neighborhood got together. We have signed over two hundred signatures to go to the city to say, you know what, we want to voice on an upcoming project because we were being heard. Those two members represented the entire neighborhood. We no longer had members because they weren't allowed to be members. Their membership was denied. Our meetings were closed. We weren't allowed in. So the fact is, when you participate, realize your own neighbors from joining a neighborhood, this is where the city councilperson comes in. Make sure everyone is heard. Don't be screwed the entire neighborhood for a specific group of people who actually have been found to be working for a developer. So I would love to...
On that note, people working for developers, Art Hall is out of touch totally. One small example is why would he appoint a person to HTRC out of the million and a half people in San Antonio, a person who was formerly heavily involved in Alamo Beer, working for them? One of the most controversial firms in this whole debate over the use of the land. That doesn't make any sense, except that it happens in every single place you look. There's a small group of developers and people who have influenced this election for the past five years. So am I gonna listen to the neighborhood associations? No way. And I don't even want your vote because most of y'all, sorry, and I'm sure there's a lot of good people here. Thank you for having me. But you do not represent the neighborhoods that you point to. I'm I'm not kidding. I live in uh uh Dignity Hill. I see it all the time. I see the way the developers come in and just put their own people and run people out who are longtime members of the neighborhoods. And I'm sorry, I just have to say thank you.
All right. Our next question is about property taxes. Property values in Maggie Park have risen drastically in the past decade. Long-time residents are beginning to struggle to afford the ability to continue to live in the community that they have helped build. What if if you have a plan, what is your plan to help mitigate skyrocketing property taxes and preserve existing affordable rental units in our neighborhood? Then the second question that is proposed as well is, as we know, the legislature is still moving, it's still in flux. Do y'all support the current property tax plan? And so this is a two-pronged question. You'll have a minute to answer.
Uh, I I was born in nineteen fifty-two. To me, this is an issue of morality versus immorality. If someone bought a house the year I was born and they raised their family and they paid their taxes, they paid their mortgage, and now they're of a certain age, it's immoral in the United States of America that they should have to worry about being removed from that home, their homestead where they raised their children, because they can't afford, they're struggling to pay taxes. It's just immoral. It's immoral. So and I'm glad that the legislature is addressing this while moving to that part of it. But they're not doing enough. It's almost too little, too late. It's too little, too late. We have to address this. Taxes should never be a reason for someone to lose their home. So yes, the legislature is moving in the right direction, as they tend to do. They're moving far too slowly and they're not doing enough.
So when it comes to the issue of property taxes, I look at my mother and I know that she is proud to have the legacy that my grandparents left for her. But I've also seen her go down to the tax assessor's office and stand there to make arrangements. For me, that's a problem. I'm a hundred percent service uh connected disabled vet. So for me, if I was to buy my own home, I would be a hundred percent property taxing them. But that doesn't speak to everyone that sits here. When you look at the issue of property taxes that are skyrocketing anywhere from two hundred and ten percent and up, you start looking at displacing a community. And when you start looking at displacing a community, then who are we actually serving? When the legislature said that they will implement a goal to help with property taxes, then they're saying, oh, but we'll have to raise the sales tax. So for me, who actually wins? Because now you're still passing that down to the person that is already struggling in one area to have to struggle in another. So we as a city truly need to implement the true homestead exemption for people who have owned their homes for fifteen years or more to ensure that you have a home and a legacy to pass to your generations to come. Thank you.
So in terms of the property tax issue, it's a very highly energetic issue because it's impacting pretty much, I would say, the majority of San Antonio. But specifically in terms of District Two, I bought my home ten years ago. I'm from the east side. Where I bought my ten years ago, my mother bought hers in the early eighties. And it was at that time, because she lives right near the Almond Dome, she said, you know what, we're making fights out of this neighborhood. When your mother tells you that in nineteen eighty-eight, you don't necessarily take it serious considering the neighborhood. But you know what? Her words have proven to be prophetic. Now we see that the city has used different measures in terms of talking about a potential tax freeze, which is something that we can look at and investigate, and I definitely thought. We've looked at maybe issuing out what they call a City Homestead uh Act or Initiative. And that could help you if in fact you're not elderly and you're not a mortgage owner. And so those are some things that we can look at. And of course, people need to know that they have the homestead exemption. That has to happen. But in terms of the second portion, which I think is more important in a sense, it's related to the state level. And they've capped the rate, the state legislature has capped the rate of property taxes, which is tied to your school financing at two point five percent. Now, on the surface, that looks great because essentially what it says is, look, we're the good guys who are helping your community. But what's not told is the notion that it begins to drive the school financing, which impacts areas like here, like a Lamar, like a Douglas, like maybe Irving on the west side. So at this point, it becomes somewhat a partisan issue. There's this notion or attitude that, well, the schools are shrinking or they're becoming smaller. So the issue isn't necessarily that impacted. And what I would say, we need to address that today and tomorrow.
Thanks. Great question. Um, I think it starts with education. As I said before, uh, I'm a three-year homeowner and I just found out about the homestead exemption last year. And so a lot of people have been in their homes and they don't know that they can profit from the homestead exemption. I looked at my tax bill. Uh, my homestead exemption went up from ten thousand to thirteen thousand. Uh, my taxes went up about another thousand. And so I'm trying to understand how the taxes are working with the itemized portion of it. And so education is where it starts at. And so for me, if you are someone who's invested into the neighborhood and you're giving a home to a family and you're helping keep somebody out of the street, I think they should extend the homestead exemption to more than one property. I think uh as 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 long as you are helping the family and you don't have to own Airbnb, I think you should uh go ahead, they should go ahead and let you put that extra house on a homestead exemption if you own that house and you're providing uh shelter for a family. But for me, like I said, this is my education. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm not a tax expert, but I'm learning every day. I'm going out there, I'm reading, and I'm talking to people, and I'm learning as a homeowner because I'm invested and I wanna know. And uh I wanna work with neighborhoods that are having problems with taxes. And the biggest thing is that you guys just wanna make a profit. Sometimes, it's nothing wrong with making a profit off of something that you put your heart and money into. And so as as a councilman, I'm not against the government, but I'm against our justification, I am. Thank you.
Great topic. We've been dealing with it for a long time. It's a couple of weeks ago. We're in the V-CAD. And do you wanna open it? No. We knew it was gonna hit us. The fact is, the city can't answer why they're taxing us. They make excuses. They're not giving us numbers. They're not telling us where our money is gonna go to. We know that our money, we are paying for the incentives to the developers. They're getting their freezes for ten years. Would you like to have your property tax free and frozen and just stayed stagnant for ten years? Because the fact is, right now, I'm helping some of my neighbors look at their taxes. And the law, I'm going on a V-CAD, and I would recommend you doing this too. There's a math application on V-CAD. Look at your neighbor's properties and see what their tax status. Some won't have a tax due because of their age. But right now, in my neighborhood, the homes that are being converted into bars and restaurants pay zero improvement on their ba- on their tax bill. Zero. The most I found right now is ten thousand dollars on the structure. We know they need to be taxed because I can see it's worth a move of a neighbor's home down the street and they're being taxed out of their home. Why are they able to have their taxes frozen or not actually in? Please compare it to the homeowners. This is what we need to think about for legacy homeowners and legacy businesses. We need to keep those people around because they built our community and we need to freeze our taxes. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'm not a tax expert either, but I did work at one of those income tax places for a while. But I quit because they were really predatory, like, you know, really high interest rates on the on the loans that they were giving people on their refunds. And it's definitely, uh, I refund this year was nearly as big as I thought it was gonna be. Uh, I wasn't able to pay my taxes on my house, so I started the process. Uh, it started with a little at twelve percent uh initial fee and additional one percent month. And then along with that is the letters from the people who will help you pay your taxes. I guess, you know, if you're somewhere, you go otherwise your house essentially to do that. Uh, so I don't see a huge difference between the payday loans, the uh the predatory tax refund people, and the way the city actually implements its policy to try to incentivize people to pay. I mean, it makes the city more money for them not to pay, so. But as far as the actual rates, I mean, everybody's saying, oh, they're so high, they're so high. Yeah, they're high, but I mean, we haven't had a an increase in the cost of electricity in like seven years for the most part. Um, that's a really long time, especially because when compared to the annual gain in the consumer price index. If you look at how much CBS is a part of the actual city budget, it's much more than a normal city would have to be coming to be aware.
So there's a lot to this, and I'm very solution-oriented. So I've already created or started something, which is that I went to the tax appraiser myself. I had him create a due diligence checklist that was not ever done before so that homeowners know how to go about protesting their taxes, both in English and in Spanish. This was something that they've never had established already. But that means that when you go in front of a five-person panel and you have to protest your taxes, the average citizen is not prepared for that battle. So we need to make sure that we provide all of our residents the tools, the resources, the knowledge they need to not only protest their taxes, but to continue to fight for their property. Um, but I also want to state that, you know, in addition to homeowners, our city is comprised of fifty-five percent renters. So in addition to, which also votes, and their money's green, and they've had to pay taxes as well, maybe just not property taxes. But if their landlord cannot afford the tax increase on that house, they're going to go ahead and pass that that fee along because it's it's, we're unable. I mean, I too am a landlord, uh, so I understand that. And I choose to eat at that cost because I know my tenants cannot pay that additional, you know, a thousand dollars per year. It's it's unrealistic. Uh, but we also need to be realistic here and say that it is the commercials, the the companies, the very large companies that are not paying their share fair, and it's being put on us. So unless you actually have someone that's willing to fight for you and not be who lives in the chambers and everybody else, you better just expect the same thing from leadership as it's been. Thank you.
As density invades along Broadway north of downtown and current plans call for fewer lanes and traffic on an already busy motorway, what is your plan for balancing the need for growth with challenges that may arise due to changing traffic patterns and transportation options?
When it comes to growth, cutting our lanes and making people unaccessible to where they need to go, we must address it now because as we continue to grow, we know that many people are gonna use our highways and our byways to get to and from the areas that they travel. We must ensure that our children's safety is met first within our school areas to ensure that the buses can get through, the parents can pick up their children. And along this Broadway corridor, you're not just sitting there idling for about a ten to fifteen minutes at a time. When you look at how Broadway is set up now coming into your neighborhood, having one lane in the middle of five o'clock traffic is unspeakable. We must start looking at different ways to access our roadways as we come up Broadway. It's already narrow. If we make it narrower, how many people are gonna truly be able to access that without being stuck, without having to waste gas, without raising emissions? These are the things that we must look at as we continue to grow as a community and as a city to make sure that our populations that are uh critical to breathing and have asthma, C L P D, and things of that nature are not affected by how we shrink traffic. Thank you.
So again, traffic at this point is paralleling the growth that we face here in the city. And there's no one easy answer for it. But what I would say is there does need to be a need aside from the notion of the bonding, how transparent that is, and the push for the the work that's actually being done to be even done at a faster rate. Because Broadway's been worked on for a minimum, I would say, ten years that I've seen that. I talked to a city planner when I was in my twenties, so that tells me where we're at, right here at Bike Hard Work. Um, but in short, what I would say is this, there needs to be alternative forms of transportation. A lot of our demographic is getting younger and they're more flexible in terms of saying, look, I don't necessarily need a car. The jobs are being created in these same areas, so why can't we look at bike lanes? Why can't we be comparable to something like Austin in terms of that? The scooter issue, I know, is a very controversial one, but it do help alleviate some of those concerns. People have become more pedestrian-oriented in the sense that they're willing to walk because now you have growth in terms of the bars, the restaurants, the museums, so people are able to get there likewise. But more importantly, this ties to the notion of a a moral issue, and we need to continue to see that process through.
Uh, the thing for me is that as more people are coming into this area, they need to be safe. Uh, we've had, I think, two or three bicycles killed. Um, Tito, Bramstrom, and I've got another guy out there around the community. So safety is the biggest issue over here. We have a lot of walkers. Uh, this is a beautiful area. The zoo, uh, you know, Breckenridge Park, and so much stuff to do up here. So many people that walk up and down Broadway, across the street. Uh, so I think safety is one of the things we we need to focus on. Making sure that the other thing we come up with, that the traffic is not impeding on the tourists that are around here. Because Easter's coming up this weekend, so it's gonna be a lot more people around here. So we gotta make sure that people who are going up and down Broadway are not speeding. People are respecting pedestrians, and we're just respecting other cars as we pass by. And I think it's it's all about respect. It's all about, when you drive, you have to watch out for your neighbors. So I think safety is the biggest important thing to focus on, safety.
Yes, we have problems with our traffic. We also have to reevaluate how we get to and from work, to appointments across town. Because not everybody's comfortable with V-CAD because it doesn't mean they're stable. So with that in mind, we need to think about looking at that because we own V-CAD. And it is not being efficient. There's something wrong with that. So maybe even privatizing letting other companies in in respect of maybe working with some of the companies here in town. We have alma cards with over 600 employees coming into our area. Maybe, maybe to have something available for their employees because they don't work downtown. I mean, they work back in the middle of downtown. He might live in the far north area. More ride shares to get them down here to work. Same thing with pre-owns. We have pre-owns that go to the medical center. We know we have people that made a day of men coming down to the museums. Coming in San Antonio Park, uh, San Antonio Museum of Art, coming down to the museum. Have pre-owns for them as well because we are gonna keep cars. If you live in, we're not gonna have a park, but now you have cars because you have to do them. We keep cars coming.
Alright, well, there's, there's a relatively new saying, uh, in Saudi Arabia, it's that my father drove an automobile, I have a jet and my son will ride a cable. It's about the future of the fossil fuels and the way our society is changing. If we say that we want the construction to end and we wanna do construction the right way and the first time we put an end to it, do it the right way. We know that the only way that we can have a sustainable footprint in San Antonio is to cut these lanes down. It's what the experts have told us. We're talking about billions of dollars in external costs of the healthcare that's required because of having so many fossil fuel burning vehicles in such a dense area. We, there will be a drastic change in the way that society functions. There will be driverless cars. Things will be very, very different. Let's aim for it.
How many of y'all heard that they were going to close down Mulberry Street? Nobody? Oh, they have plans coming up for y'all. Nobody tells you. It's al- it's also like Brackenridge Park three years ago when they were going to close down and make this to the cars but not enter. Once again, I didn't all of a sudden come out here because of election time, right? I've been walking these streets since I was a young girl. And when I worked at Kitty Park, the best part of a Sunday was seeing all the low riders drive by on Broadway. That was my favorite time and I still remember those days very clearly. And if we do not do something about our congestion, if they close down Mulberry as they did, they wanted to do for Brackenridge so cars could no longer enter and they're not even informing the community? Even Kitty Park wasn't even aware of what Brackenridge was going, what they had going on. I had to go and tell them myself. Look, I am a huge cyclist. I cycled in Portland, I cycled in Amsterdam, I cycled in Vancouver. But it wasn't until I came home and got hit on my bicycle in front of me in middle school. And then I'm on my way to a safety committee on top of that. I cannot make this stuff up. So I understand the importance of having other modes of transportation. I've taken the bus since I was a child. Ten cents is what it used to cost us to get on the bus. If we do not figure out something, we are going to be in the same position as we have been. Thank you.
Not every option will fit every area of district or the city. But you're unique again. Let me get back to that. You are really congested here. It is so bad. You're a bottleneck right here in your little area on Broadway. So we need to look at transportation options. And, and again, I know that, that cost is always rearing its head. Uh, we, we need to know what the cost will be. But we do have all of these companies that wanna come in here, these major corporations, developers, has a condition of doing business here, building here and they're gonna make a ton of money or they wouldn't wanna come. Why don't we have them kick in for something specific? Transportation, alternative transportation. So that we can, and, and it can be targeted, maybe not to the entire city, but certainly your Broadway quarter. So let's look at, as Ruben said, enhance bike lanes. And I mean enhance, enhance for safety. And there's gotta, there's gotta be more technology. So enhance bike lanes and drop.
Thank you. As it relates to Mickey Park's current housing stock, we are experiencing very drastic and quick changes in the way that the face of our neighborhood is looking. A lot of that spurred the conversation that, since data referenced earlier about our N C D, our neighborhood conservation, the strike. And we are continuing to experience development. What approach will you as a council member take to managing that development and the different opinions that will come to it in our neighborhood? And then how do you plan to bounce positive impacts of development and negative consequences?
So development is the big booking monster that we typically throw out there. But specifically, we need to look at the details of what that is. Essentially, we have development that comes in the form of condos, apartment complexes and bigger entities like that. The other part of it comes in the form of people doing individual rehab. But at the end of the day, no matter what agenda you do have, you have to be able to push the notion that development is here and we have to grapple with the reality of it. But it can't come at the cost of people losing their homes, of people being taxed out of the area and then saying, well, that's progress. You need to be able to sacrifice. What has to happen is this, it's a very simple approach. You have to have a council lead that has a backbone that won't be able to say, will say one thing that you want to hear in terms of pandering or just saying whatever we need to say out here so that everyone can clap for you. But then as soon as you get with a developer, they'll sit there and drive an agenda and you're just a conduit for it. Now, that's happened before in terms of the council people that we've had. Not necessarily just D2. That's something that happens throughout San Antonio, across the country. So what I say is this, I issue a challenge. If you come to character test in terms of who has the backbone to address those issues and who has a backbone in San Fran for your neighborhood?
As I said, I will, um, work with the neighborhood associations, work with the community, have talks and discussions like this one. Uh, also I will form, we call it like a special projects committee so that way we can go into the community and talk to people who, who know what's going on because I know there's a lot of stuff that's going on. I know a few of the projects that's happening in this area too. And for me, I think it's, it's important to get people who know the area, who know how to talk to different people and just make sure that we have the proper oversight. One of the biggest things that I have been, I was at Sage, I used to work at Sage for two years. And the biggest things that we saw out of developers was that none of them came with impact studies. They wanted to do development, but there was no impact study to show how that development was gonna impact that neighborhood. They just wanted to make money. And so I think everybody should be honest first and tell the community how this, how, what the project you wanna do is gonna impact the community and help the community. Thank you.
I love this topic. Because what we're dealing with in your neighborhood, if I block walk, we can see the inferior product of these homes that are being built. Because we don't have the right people in the city departments. They are making those checkmarks on those lists, on code compliance requirements. Because we have different developers with different names of companies working within our district and district two. You can have, just look up one of the major developers, Charles Turner. He has two pages for the developments of properties he owns around District Two for different names. When I walked and touched the doorbell, I was distracted because the foundation is writing on some of these new developments. It's a quick build. It's not quality build. When you're living in a home that's over a hundred years old and it still has character? Yeah, it takes us a little while to make sure we're up and running, cleaning it, updating it, but it's still there. It has character. And what's happening in our neighborhood, it's not character. It's money and it's free. Thank you.
Oh, about the development, uh, I don't even know where to start. I haven't thought of it, lost it. But anyways, I'll just start out. I'm sorry if this hurts your feelings, but these skinny houses over here in Mickey Park, uh, I understand that they built them. Oh, yeah. I did a lot of block walking here too and uh, everybody knows that Mickey Park matters so much to District Two, District Two candidates because this is where you can get the most donations. So it's a really great place to go and knock on the doors. So I was going around knocking on the doors. It's such a great place to do that. I found out that the skinny houses, at least some of them are being built with like green materials. And so I guess it's alright, but I mean, they're so close together. I don't see how the, the mud, uh, I don't see how the grass is ever gonna grow between them. I'm feeling it's just gonna turn into mud and erosion eventually and the link quality as well. Um, I think Mickey Park is an example of when we don't want development to look like, at least what I've been seeing.
So once again, with my construction background, I see a lot of homes that are repaired or are turned into Airbnb, but they're except hard work, right? So you have people coming in doing half jobs and not really fulfilling the needs that they have to by code compliance and so forth. So that's just a quick turnaround in what we, in which we can approve things right now, right? Just the level at which we're providing, uh, and building our homes because they, we want these homes to last for very long. The second thing is unless we appoint people onto our boards and commissions that actually reflect not only your council member, but the community itself and not, you know, selecting friends or selecting individuals that run, you know, scratch your back and I scratch yours. They have no idea what a zoning is or anything else like that. They just, you know, that's really why our city does not move forward. This is why our district does not move forward. Because we keep on having the same mediocre, mediocre leadership instead of having people push forward and representing the community as a whole. Thank you.
Not all development is bad, but certainly not all development is good either. If you live in Mickey Park, Denver Heights, it's not unusual to have 100-year-old homes, as Joseph said, he's 100% correct. And those homes have character. Now, how do you define that? It's like a train wreck. You know it when you see it. You may not be able to tell, but you know a 100-year-old home has character. And you look at some of these things that they're building now, just they have absolutely no character. And I try to think, what will this thing look like in 60 years? I won't know. But I try to project that and I think it's just gonna be horrendous if it's still there in 60 years. I really do because the workmanship is shoddy and you can tell. Our communities just can't be for sale, folks. I mean, it's okay. We can't stop it. I guess it's development. It's America. If you have the money and you wanna develop, go through the system. But that's where the problem lies downtown. Make them, hold them accountable. Hold them accountable. If you say you only want a certain kind of architecture in your community, that's what downtown city halls should be.
So after that addresses the N C D from Mickey Park, what I've noticed is that you've already spoken and understand that you want your homes that are coming in or when there is a, a new development or you want improvements, you want it to match what the history of your area looks like. You don't want it to step completely out the box, but you want it to mimic exactly what the history of the 25-plus years of homes that have been here have stated. When you have new development coming in, you want it to be built on the foundation of the ground and the bones and the history that you already have here. So with your N C D, you need someone that truly understands that you have worked hard enough to look at what your community seeks and put that into place, implement that. Even with the developers, if they come in, ask them exactly what is their agenda to rectify the situations that are already here that are dilapidating when there's supposed to be new development. We must take that step. We must take that step now. Thank you.
You all have 30 seconds to answer this question. If you're elected and seek re-election, what should voters expect you to have achieved in your first term in your municipal?
Uh, one of the first things is increased transparency, uh, between constituents and the city councilman. I may not be the most fearless, but I'm straight up. I won't lie to you and you can always pop up on the phone and tell me exactly how you feel. Another thing is I'm gonna work really, really hard to make this place a lot better, especially inside. And work on solving crime. We have a lot of gang violence over there and I wanna work hard and work with you over there and get these people on the right track and get those neighbors back on the right track. So you can expect that from me.
Information. I know all of you are asking questions. You reach out, you want those questions answered. We go around circles trying to make calls downtown, going to one stop. You don't get those questions answered. I wanna know about our taxes. Where are our bond money? Where are our monies going to? You tell us that we have to upkeep our alleys? Well, guess what? Our charter says that they're responsible for our alleys. We know we're responsible for our sidewalks, but we also know that we can implore and demand that the developing, developers from here do their part and help us with our sidewalks. Thank you.
In my first 90 days, I will vote yes on a climate action plan. I think it's one of the most important things on the agenda. We live in an ever-changing world and it seems that as time goes on, we are ever closer to inducing ourselves to an ecological catastrophe. I think that when it comes to deciding whether to act or not to act, when the end and final and worst possible outcome is the death of all mankind, even if that is only one tenth of 1100, 1%, we should act against that. That is what a proper risk management policy would look like. It involves, it starts by shutting down the coal burning plants, which is the one that's kind of very slay. The screws, the second screws unit has to go and you're not gonna let me do it. So we need to raise the, uh, the, the utility fees. We just have to raise it, okay, by 12% over a four-year period. Thank you.
So you can expect from me in the first six months to clean house. That's as simple as it is. I plan on cleaning house. We have so much conflict of interest on various organizations, various industries, various chambers. There are, that, once again, is why our city has not moved forward, right? Not only our city, but our district. So my first six months will be cleaning house. I also got endorsed by the Bicycle and Ridership Organization because once again, I am an enthusiast of not only cycling, but safety. And so I'm going to make sure that all of our bike lane things, we have parallel routes are in, are already addressed and figured out. Being proactive versus reactive, not waiting until after the fact or losing another life, which we shouldn't have lost those lives to begin with. Um, at my 12-month mark, I'm going to talk to companies. But unless these companies are going to ensure through their community action plan that they are going to employ people from the district, that is how people address crime, is by having jobs for people. Thank you.
My cell phone number is 210-471-9941. In office, out of office, doesn't matter, call me. Open door policy, call me. Can't be everywhere. I know that from experience. But when I can, I'll come. Not a staffer, I'll come, may bring a staffer, but I'll come in open door policy to listen to you, to listen to your concerns. Thanks so much.
So as your city councilwoman, desperately speaking for my community and making sure that you come to the table, making sure that your voice is heard, making sure that the community has the action that it needs behind it. So full transparency, full accountability, full access is exactly what you'll get from me from today until the day that I'm no longer able to be appointed, elected into that team. Thank you.
So there's two parts to this answer. In terms of our vision, like I said, we wanna alter where we are at. We can leave San Antonio, but that can be done by unifying all of District Two. Again, we can't be fractured. And then when we approach City Hall, say, well, we wanna push this policy or this agenda. Because the second part to that, which is more effective and we're not talked about, is although we have these views, when you get to City Hall, you're gonna have to negotiate a compact with people that have a different viewpoint, a different agenda, a different type of constituency. If you're gonna lay down, if you're gonna give up, if you're gonna say, well, I can't do these things with them or end up in the same place in two years. we'll end up in the same place in two years.
Alright guys, we have five more questions for y'all. It's not like a lot, but they're lightning round questions. So, we asked that you just answer yes or no with no elaboration. If you really have to talk about it, um, come find me afterwards and I'll record it. I'll put it on our Facebook. People are being engaged in there. Okay, so, our first lightning round question, yes or no only. Do you support city ordinance to require paying family duty?
No.
See me.
Yes, as long as it doesn't sound like it's supported.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I support.
Alright, we're going to start from this end now. Would you publicly support a state law that would require paying family duty?
Yes, I mean, I support, okay, yes. Yes, wow, means?
Yes.
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 People, yes.
Do you support city ordinance to require a living wage for all public employees and employees of private contractors within the city?
Yes, I'd support a minimum wage for all members of San Antonio.
Yes, long overdue.
Yes.
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 The same, but would you publicly support a state law that would require a minimum wage of $15 an hour?
Uh, yes, I would. Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Our last one is specific to Yankee Park. We had lots of neighbors individually and collectively come together and suggest this. Would you support a speed limit change of 25 miles an hour on residential streets within Yankee Park and the police enforcement of that speed limit?
Yes.
If you want it.
Yes.
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 Yes, but it better be enforced. I would.
Thank you. Alright, um, so, as is a longstanding tradition within Yankee Park, we have a final question. Before we ask it, um, let's give our candidates a round of applause. Um, candidates, thank you for being here. Every question that was asked tonight was a grassroots question, organically came from the community. Um, we've been really excited to have y'all. Thank you for giving up your time with your family, for your jobs, for exercising, achieving health, that would have been a lot of tough people to say, yes, it was. Um, so, our final question, how many years have we asked this question? Twenty? Okay, so, a longstanding tradition. What is the most recent book you've read cover to cover? And what is your favorite movie?
Oh, cover to cover?
Well, I expected it was a horror with Logan and Gobert, rather than a wild map because right now I'm just reading all these policies I'm trying to learn about. Movie? I don't watch movies, and my husband won't let me watch it. He's been looking at this talk all night, like a day or more. So, um, back to that one, I see blood on his shirt, but, um, surgery. But, um, that's Gloria now. But, uh, a movie that I really, really enjoyed, and, alright guys, I'm a romantic and I love action landscapes and Friday mornings. I'm sorry, I just love the scenery.
Uh, I just forgot what it was. Uh, I'll do the movie first, I'll just say a little something, uh, in the, oh, yeah, I remember. Oh, How To Win An Election, by Marcus Sisera. It is in Latin, so it's hard to remember.
So, I don't know if anybody has heard of this book, but Shatirah. Nine hundred pages, ladies and gentlemen. I'm an avid reader, I'm a voracious reader. Um, in addition to Shatirah, I'm just a movie buff, but, uh, lover, but, man, there's so many good ones. This is really putting me on the spot. Um, I really haven't even thought of one. So, uh, I'm just a foreign film lover, so anything from foreign films, um, I'll just, I can't even think just because there's so many. Let me, uh, I'll pass on that and come back.
The book, uh, I bought from my wife, and she's very upset because I took it and I read it before I gave it to her. It was Becoming by Michelle Bumner. And my favorite movie of all time is Godfather.
So, the last book I read from cover to cover would be The Outsiders. Um, and I just kind of took the movie with the book because that is one of my favorite movies. I love how you can just truly step outside and become something better than where you come from.
So, in terms of reading, I read the San Antonio Herald, which is a blog, it's a community blog, which I love. And then the book is Bless Me Uti Mom. I wrote it up on Naya, it's one of my favorite books, right, it's my favorite. And in terms of movies, I don't want to get over dramatic or sad, but, uh, third grade at St. George, we watched Glory. And that's the first time as a young boy I've seen where good didn't necessarily always win. And it really should be, and that movie always stayed with me, and I love that movie.
Uh, the book that I read from cover to cover is called The Masterpiece System by Charles Neil. Uh, it's a very good book, actually, shoot, they have the audio version of it too. Also, my favorite movie is anything Eddie Murphy. Trade Play Series, Beverly Hills Cop, 48 Hours, Raw, Delirious, Come To America. So, I'm a really big Eddie Murphy fan, and so, if you put on Eddie Murphy, then we can have all day. Thank you.
Great, thank you guys, and now we'll start at this end, since we started at the other end. You have a minute to do a closing statement.
Hello, folks, thank you again for having me. Uh, my name is Walter Perry, and I'm asking for your vote. Uh, I'm asking you to vote. It's 175,000 people in District 2. And over the years, our voting numbers have been extreme, dis- disgraceful. So, right now, I want to make a call to action to all of you little folks to go to the polls and vote. And let's send a message to City Hall, District 2, Yankee Park, and all the neighborhoods are engaged. We are ready to change the direction of our city, and we want to take control of our own lives and city, and we're just tired of it. So, I want you guys to vote. There's some really good people up there, we're all passionate about the community. Even if you don't vote for me, vote for somebody. But go vote, because your vote matters. We want to send a message. So, I'm asking for 20,000, at least 20,000 votes. I want to see that, go early vote. Please make me proud, and please, please, please go vote. Thank you.
Once again, thank you for this evening. Uh, my name is Ruben Arsenega. And essentially what I say is this, I believe District 2 can be the lead community in all of San Antonio, and I believe with all my heart. But more importantly, there is a number of issues that we have to address, but that has to be done by unifying all our communities, no matter what party section that you live on. Um, and in the end, what I say is this, no matter the outcome of what happens, I don't ask that you commit to me. I just ask, and respectfully ask and request, that you continue committing to your community. Because if that happens, then we'll be transformative and we'll change the things that we want to change. If that doesn't happen, then we'll be back at the same place in two years with other candidates. Thank you.
Thank you again for having me. I'm Jada Andrew Sullivan. As I stand in front of you, just remember, I'm not a politician. I'm just a concerned community member. I look like you, I speak like you for my community. There's harmony in unity, and there's harmony when we speak together. If we stand with each other and we stand connected as a unit within District 2, we move mountains. We are the shining light that can lead an example to what you can do when you truly work together and you speak for those that have not been heard. So, I stand in front of you and I ask that you speak for your district, that you speak for your community, and that we all speak together. Thank you.
Well, I'm Keith Tony, and I don't want any other political office after this. I'm not qualified to be a judge, so you don't have to worry about that. Uh, I don't want anything else. I don't need any more titles. I've been called president and so forth, I've been called councilman, I've done all that kind of thing. And the best title in the world, other than being somebody's husband, and I've been somebody's husband for 43 years, but it's, it's that I have five young people on this earth who call me father. And that's the best thing in the world. So, I'm not going to say anything else. And I'll tell you this, District 2 is comprised of, well, folks, all the northeast side, the southeast side, the near east side, and the Broadway Court. So, that's like having a child that doesn't have the same last name as everybody else in the family. So, I, I pick them to call you Broadway East. So, you're East 2, because we're all in this together. Well, you've heard us all say that, everybody's unique, but we're all in this together. We're all District 2. I know you may not feel like that sometimes, but we're all District 2. I've never forgotten it, I won't forget, forget it. Thank you for having us tonight.
You just hope to remember one thing, vote Selena, vote Selena. At the end of the day, um, I did not just show up on the scenes. I've been walking and working since I was 14 years old, if not younger, that's what was put on the books, right? I have been working, and I know that many of you have been working that long, if not longer in your lifetime. And you deserve better. You deserve to have leadership that's not only going to speak on your behalf, but holds responsibility and accountability. You can go look at my financial report and see that all of the donors are individuals, small donors, community members, and residents like yourself. There are no developers, there are no big boys, there are no presidents. These are people that believe in me and see in me the same thing that they believe. So, go to your homework. This has been more than just a campaign, this has been a movement. Since I put myself out there and poured, I have decided, I have signed up more and registered more than 50 people to vote. That is not about me, that is about us as a district. Thank you, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Jessica Powell. As, uh, I think most of us have already observed, the growth rate in this city is absolutely unsustainable. Uh, and the only way to stop that is through policies that slow the growth rate. The one we should slow that is because if, if, sorry, uh, puts upon the people the price shocks associated with raising rent increases faster than a certain percent amount per year. Otherwise, it would be sustainable. At this point, it's not. And the people who suffer from this are not the people who can afford housing, uh, in this, in this new economy anyways. Uh, it increases crime, increases crime, it adds to exacerbates the commodification of human suffering and the corporate profiteering of the criminal justice system, uh, within our city and within our nation. Uh, we need to do things to slow growth, we need to advance the shift in the tax burden from individuals to business. Capitalism is an actual failure. Thank you.
As I mentioned about the movie, I love something that is still in the book. Living in San Antonio and being a member of the San Antonio Conservation Society, I love our history. We have lived in the birthplace of Texas. That does not mean that we can go forward without respecting our history. We know we have to head toward the future, and we have to respect what we came from. Right now, we're watching TV since yesterday with Notre Dame and fire. As an artist, I'm heartbroken thinking, can it be saved and when and how it will be saved? We have an issue to the city council right now that has dealt with the Alamo. If we have an opportunity to voice our opinions and have the respect of our Texans to say, "No, this belongs to us. Who gives you the right to give the Alamo away?" Gives you the right to close it off. Just respect the Woolworth Building. There's many things happening right now, and your council person will be your voice and will be the voice of our, of voice of our city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for listening to me. Um, we would like to give a huge, thank you, Charlene Lucas of NowPass that's here. She's a very, very friendly and a fellow engagement, and she's incredible. She has a pretty good partner in crime. Well, we would like everyone to know that this video will be available through NowPass sometime this week. Yes, and, um, so please reference it, share it with your friends, and we will see if y'all anticipate it after this.